Good evening and welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals February 17, 2022 meeting. Is Scott Shippey with us? There he is. So I'm pleased to welcome Scott Shippey, who's the Town of Foxborough's new building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer. And we welcome you and look forward to working with you. Pleased to have you here. The time being seven o'clock. Teresa Federico seeks a variance under section 4.1.1, Table 4-1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to allow the construction of an attached garage to a single-family home that would result in such home having a side yard setback of five feet where 15 feet is required. The property is located at 8 Margaret Road in the R15 residential district. It is not located in any restrictive overlay district. Ms. Federico, you want to come up to that table? So first of all, you can see there are four people here. Diana's our administrative secretary, four zoning board members, but only three of us can vote, and that's the three regular members. So Dave, Kim, and I will be the only voting members, although all of us will participate.
Sure.
Okay? Tell us what you want to do.
I just want to put a garage in the side of a home where the driveway is. Excuse me. Just because I, the major reason was I'm a nurse and I'm on call sometimes. And I think the last time I, a couple of years ago, I had a shovel like several feet or so, and I'm like, this isn't going to work. So I usually have, I might have to get in kind of quickly sometimes within 30 minutes. So it was just something we thought that we could try and see if we could put a garage on there.
So you have a fairly sizable piece of property.
Yeah.
The house is located close to your neighbor.
Yeah.
Any idea why the house is situated where it is? I know you've only had the house for about four years.
Yeah, we just moved there and honestly, I, we bought the house not, you know, the first thing I said, you know, I hope we can add a garage on. I didn't really realize how close it was, but long story short, the other side of the back has a septic system, so that wouldn't really work to put it on the other side of the home. And then we'd have to kind of go through a wall and everything, and it was more cost prohibitive. The other plan would be in the very back, like go all the way back and like in the middle of the backyard.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a big tree there, and it's like our only tree. And I'm like, you know, I really don't want to lose that big beautiful tree. So I, you know, figured that we would try and see if we could get a variance, just to see if we could have it placed, you know, where the driveway is, the easiest way to just go in.
Right. Now, on this side of the house, though, you've got 27 feet.
Yeah.
Is it rocky there, ledge there, wet there, you know?
I know, but there's a big tree in the front there, and then it, there's a, there's a wall.
Mm-hmm.
So we'd have to take down the wall and put a driveway out through the wall. It would just, you know, be a little, well, probably a lot more expensive there. And then we do have the septic's in the back, but, you know.
But essentially, you don't know why the house is placed so close to, you know, to one side?
Oh, no, I don't.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Where's there, looking at the house on the street, the right side?
Yeah.
So there's that section of it that kind of carved out. Was that, with the original house, do you know? Had there been a carport at one point? I mean, just.
On the, was you looked to the right?
Yeah. Well, you've got the 27-foot.
Oh, yeah, that was an in-law. There was, when we moved in, there's a, I, we think that was the original, and then the other piece was actually on the left side was, was added on. And they, they made the existing garage, they had a garage there, but they made it living space. And there was a separate in-law when we moved in on that side with the, to the right.
So that was a garage.
There was a garage on the left.
Something might be like that, looking at the other houses on the street.
Yeah, they made a living space out of that.
Kurt, Kim, any questions?
Not at the moment.
Can that, I got one more. Can that, we'll call it now the former garage area?
Yeah.
Can that, if you looked at reclaiming that as a garage?
We, we thought about doing that, and we had, you know, a builder person look at it. He just said it would just be so much more work to do that, to put that back. It'd probably be a lot more expensive, too. And then, I mean, it's open, you know, we do use that area as the, you know, as a living space. So, you know, we thought it might be better to just try and just add on to that. But there's a, if, when you look at that, they added on behind that. So it's not just like there's just a room there. They put a bathroom, there's a bathroom, and then there's a bedroom. That was, that was added on as well. So it's not just, you know, that spot where the garage is actually living space beyond that in the back.
Do you know if that was done with permits?
I have, I have no idea. I mean, we were, you know, like I said, we bought it in 2018.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah.
This is a two-car garage?
Um, I think it's 16. I think it's like a one-car.
Okay.
16. It's a little long, but it's, it's 16 feet, I think. It'd probably just be one car in there, definitely. My car.
So how will you get into the new garage? Will you put a door on the existing house, or?
Probably, yeah. I, I'm not, I'm not positive. I think it would be nice if we could go in through the house, you know, because we don't get a lot of sun in the front, and it's very icy, so.
When you're saying you want to avoid the snow.
Yes. Well, especially just, yeah, it would be nice if I didn't have to do that.
You have some nice icicles hanging there.
Yeah, I have terrible, it's terrible, honestly, it's terrible.
Scott, do you have any questions?
No voice.
I think he's muted.
No.
You're a, Scott, you're a talking head over there. We can't hear you. There we go.
Nothing. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? So the criteria for a variance.
Yes.
Either soil conditions, topography, or the shape of the property.
Okay.
Have to dictate the need for a variance.
Right.
If we were to literally enforce the current provisions of the bylaw, and again, it's an issue of your side yard setback.
Right.
There would have to be a substantial hardship to you, and there can't be any substantial detriment to the, to the zoning bylaw by granting the variance. So just tell us why you feel you, you deserve to, to obtain a variance from us.
It's basically just for safety, honestly, so that, first of all, I can get out without falling and running out of the house. And it's basically, like I said, when I get called in, I, it's usually a 30-minute thing, although now, you know, I could probably stretch it a little bit, but more of safety and just for me to be able to get out and get to where I need to go on time.
Have you, I think you're next to a neighbor, the Weathers. Have you talked with them?
Well, we talked with them. I didn't specifically ask them. I think actually my husband might have spoken to the people that it affects them, that they rent the house from, from somebody, they rented. So we, we actually, I believe he spoke to them, but no one has, you know, said anything.
Okay.
You know, in response to saying, no, we really would prefer you didn't do that, so.
So the house on one side of you is a rental?
The house that we, yeah, that it, that is actually borders our fence, they're like right on our fence, if you look at it, their property. Yes, I think the owner, he owns a business in town, but he rents it out to local people. They've been here for years. They just, they rent it.
So what's that, 6 Margaret Road?
I think that's 10.
10 Margaret Road, or going the other way.
Okay. Any other questions?
See if anybody else wants to be heard.
Yep. Anybody wish to be heard? There's nobody zooming in. Want to, we close the public portion of motion?
I move we close the public portion.
Second.
Go all favor? Okay. You want to be in?
I think I want to hear what you guys have to say.
Okay, so as you know, I asked Diana to send copies of a couple of cases. They were the ones that, that I remember largely because they were neighbors of mine. And one I was direct a butter, the other one a butter, two a butter. And they're relatively similar to this in the sense that we had, in both cases, somewhat of a unique, unusual shape of the property that dictated where the garage was going to be placed, or where the addition to the house was going to be placed. It'll be up against the, the side yard setback. I think in both cases, the, the shape issue of the properties were probably a little bit more extreme than here. But here, again, you do have a, an unusual, certainly it, it could be rectangular, but it's not. And the house is at an angle, and the house itself is closer to the, to the side yard, you know, to start with. So I think you certainly have a, a shape issue that would, you know, potentially warrant a, a variance. You know, certainly to grant it, I don't see any substantial detriment, so the issue comes down to the hardship.
Yeah.
And that's where I'm willing to, to see where everybody else is.
How many times a year do you have to, do you get called out in the snow?
Well, I guess it depends if it snows on, you know, several times a month, I'd say. So, I mean, and actually, and then I work full-time, I have to get in there, but.
You're shaking your head.
Well, I'm, I'm really having trouble warming up to it. You know, I mean, there's a, first, we know that there was a garage there once before, so the hardship got created by the owners at the time, right? When they eliminated the garage, if there was in fact a hardship, that's when it got I guess that's the big thing, and then I'm, you know, I'm not really feeling that what you have is that much of a hardship. Yeah, who wants to go out in the snow and, you know, clean the cars off and all that kind of stuff? Believe me, I understand that as one that does not have a garage. What's Kim think of it?
I am also struggling with the hardship question. I definitely see what you're saying, Barney, about the shape, certainly, that, that, and I also agree that there's no substantial detriment.
Mm-hmm.
So I totally agree with you on those two things. But getting down to, you know, a hardship, but I'm certainly happy to listen to someone else has a.
Argument for it.
A way to, yes.
Kurt, thoughts?
Similar to what Kim just mentioned, I'm on board with everything except the hardship issue. I'm struggling to connect those dots, you know?
So I think what we're really saying is, not only is it a hardship, it's really more out of convenience.
Yeah, well, yes. I have to be there within 30 minutes, so.
Yeah. Of course, even the truck, even though the vehicle might be in the garage, you still might have to clear off the.
Well, I can usually just go right through it. That's what I have with my other house. I would just open the garage, hit the gas, and go, you know, a little different than having a shovel for a while. I really didn't think about it until, you know, there was like a lot at the time, and I was like, oh, boy, this isn't good when I have to get in within so many minutes, it's all.
But again, I think what people are saying, again, it's more, more convenience.
Sure.
And the substantial hardship, you know, again, it might be a hardship, but it may not be substantial. It's a hardship, you know, for the few times a year that you need to, you know, to go in the car to, you know, to get out.
Right.
And, you know, hopefully those times are, are fewer than, you know, than greater. So unless we have anything else. Scott, anything you might want to add?
Sure, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yep, no, I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion, then?
I would move that we not grant the requested variance.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Well, first of all, thank you very much. We'll write up a decision. You do have a right to appeal it.
Okay.
The appeal goes to the, the court system, however.
Right.
After we prepare this decision, sign it, it's filed with the town clerk, you'll get a copy of it. Once it's filed, that starts the appeal process, or the appeal period, which is 20 days. So if you do want to appeal this decision, you have 20 days from the date that the decision itself is filed with the town clerk.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Feeling there was a garage there.
Hmm?
I had a feeling that there was a garage there.
Yeah, there were so many others.
Yeah, look at that, similar. Not that that's the end of it, but it's like.
All right, just give us a second. Okay, the time being 7:10 PM. John Theron, I hope I am pronouncing that correctly?
That's very close.
Okay, okay. How close?
Theron.
Okay. John Theron Hilton and Beverly Christensen Hilton, seek a variance pursuant to section 4.3.1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to allow access to a lot not through or across the lot's legal frontage, and any other special permits, variances, or findings as may be required with respect to the foregoing. The property is located at 310 Coacassett Street in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District, and is not in any restricted overlay district.
Good evening. Attorney Frank's plane here for the applicant owners, again, John Theron Hilton and Beverly Christensen Hilton. The property is located at 310 Coacassett Street, which is within the R40 zoning district, and it's right next to Stockbridge Road, and across the street diagonally to the entrance to the Borough Elementary School. The owners are requesting a variance from section 4.3.1 to allow access onto their property at 310 Coacassett Street, not through or across their legal frontage. Again, section 431 states that access to all lots in the Town of Foxborough shall only be through or across their legal frontage. And frontage is defined in the section 10 as that distance along a lot line which abuts a street or streets that access, and that access shall only be through or across that legal frontage. So 310 Coacassett Street has 115.76 feet of frontage on Coacassett Street, and no frontage on Stockbridge Road. However, the layout for Stockbridge Bridge Road is just four feet from their front property line. Their lot is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, because the lot as it exists today contains 12,015 square feet of area where 40,000 is required. Again, it only has just over 115 feet of frontage where 200 feet are required, and the lot width is approximately 97 feet where 134 feet is required within the R40 zone. Additionally, the house is also a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, because it has a front yard setback of 27 feet where 35 feet is required. The sided and rear yards are conforming. So the applicants and owners are requesting that this variance be allowed so that they can access their property over an easement that they have with the owners of 1 Stockbridge Road, and actually, that's where their driveway currently is located. I'm just going to give you a brief history of the lot itself. So the house was built in the early 1900s. The original lot that was deeded out with the house already on it was deeded out in May of 1923, so well in advance of zoning. The original lot was a rectangle, 115 feet by 75 feet by 115 feet by 75 feet, with 75 feet of frontage on Coacassett Street. So again, it was well before zoning, but it now is a non-conforming, pre-existing, non-conforming lot, because it's well below the requirement within the town. Again, requirement is 40,000 square feet. The original lot only had 8,627, 25 square feet. The applicant, Beverly Christian Hilton, at the time, her name was Beverly Christian Jaeger, purchased the property in July of 1987 with her then-husband, Brian Jaeger. The lot at that time, again, was pre-existing, non-conforming, because it had the lack of area, frontage and lot width. And again, the house was pre-existing, non-conforming, because it didn't have the setback required. At that time, the driveway came off of Coacassett Street to the right of the house as you look at the, look at the house. However, the driveway was partially on the butter's property. It was about half on their property, half on the property owner to the right. And this was determined when Stockbridge Road was actually developed. And that definitive plan for what was called Sunrise Court, which was the development of Stockbridge Road, was signed by the planning board on January 30, 1997. And a plan of land of Sunrise, which included a parcel B and redesigned lots 1A and 3A, was signed by the planning board in December of 1998. So approximately, just under two years later, lots, two of the lots were redesigned and a parcel B was included. Beverly Jaeger at the time, and her then-husband Brian Jaeger, acquired this parcel B, which contained 3,390 square feet of land, and an additional 40.76 feet of frontage on Coacassett Street. They also acquired at that time the right to use Stockbridge Road, as a road in Town Foxborough can be used, and an access easement over Lot 1A to their property. Again, they acquired that in January 25, 1999, from what was Romex Realty Trust. A portion of that parcel B is subject to a drainage easement. Also on that date of January 25, 1999, Romex Realty Trust sold that Lot 1A, which is 1 Stockbridge Road, to Daniel and Stephanie Lenehan. And that was subject to the access easement for the Jaegers at the time, and the drainage easements. The Lenehans still live there and own that property. The drainage easement that's on Lot B and on the property for 1 Stockbridge Road is for the, for the benefit of the drainage from Stockbridge Road and that development. And is it located immediately to the left when you drive into Stockbridge Road, and right in front, depending on how you look at the house, but if you're looking at the house from Stockbridge Road, right in front of the applicant's house. The lot and house, therefore, at 310 Coacassett Street on that date as of, and also currently is still a pre-existing, non-conforming lot and structure for the reasons previously stated. But the lot now is less non-conforming than before, because the lot acquired additional land, more frontage and more width than it did before. So it's more conforming than it was. Around that same, same time, 1998, 99, the Jaegers renovated the interior and the exterior of the house, making it larger going back and improving going up. At that time, they also constructed a new driveway off of Stockbridge Road, over the easement, over 1 Stockbridge Road, and built a walkway to the, from the new driveway to the front porch of the house, removed the driveway off of Coacassett Street, seeded, you know, and landscaped that area out front. And then also, with the permission of the Foxborough Post Office, they moved their mailbox from Coacassett Street over to Stockbridge Road. Additionally, a white fence, I don't know if anyone went down to the property, there's a white fence that goes along Coacassett Street in front of their property, turns and goes up Stockbridge in front of the property of 1 Stockbridge Road, but it's in front of their house, if you're looking at their house from Stockbridge Road. Again, ends, it ends near their existing driveway off of Stockbridge Road. Again, if you're looking at the property from Stockbridge Road, you know, it appears that that property in front of them is theirs, but it really belongs to 1 Stockbridge Road. But it is the base and detention for the overflow in there. So nothing can ever be done there.
Then the truck land goes with the Lenehans.
I'm sorry?
That piece of land, the drainage base, yes.
The majority of it is the Lenehans?
Of the Lenehans.
Yeah. A portion of parcel B, though, is also part of the drainage easement. And in their deed, you know, it's acknowledged that they know that a portion of that property is part of the drainage easement. That area in front of their house could not be transferred to them at the time of that development. The reason for it is the three lots that were developed there off of Stockbridge Road just has the frontage that they had, and they need, you know, just 200 or slightly over 200 feet. So, and the area required, and also you need lot width and all that. So they, they could not acquire, if they wanted to, any of the Stockbridge frontage for their own access, because it was needed for the three lots that were developed off Just a, in December of 2007, Brian Jaeger and Beverly Christian Jaeger transferred the house, and only the original lot, actually, to Beverly. And then Beverly, in July of 2019, then transferred it to her husband now and herself. Again, only the original lot of 8,625 feet. Recently, September of this year, Brian Jaeger, Beverly's ex-husband, and herself transferred that parcel B to the two of them. And we also did a new driveway easement agreement, which I believe you got a copy of. The reason we had to do that is, again, originally, the whole lot wasn't transferred over to Beverly. And this came up because the Hiltons came to me to talk to me about they wanted to put a garage up. And again, it's such a small lot, you know, there was possibility of variances or findings necessary, whether they were going to attach it, and where it was going to be located and all that. Once I looked into this a little further, I realized that the whole property hadn't been transferred over. The driveway hadn't actually been located where the easement had been put on a plan. It was about roughly halfway. And also, the easement could terminate in the future. So I recommend that, you know, we get that straightened out, which again, we did. So Hilton's own the whole, whole, whole property now, and we do have a easement over the property at 1 Stockbridge Road for access to the property at 310 Coacassett Street. I know, as the board knows, what the requirement for variance is, is that, as stated earlier, owning to the circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, and topography of such land and structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located, a little, literal enforcement of provision of the bylaws would involve substantial hardship, financial, or otherwise to the petitioner. And additionally, desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaws. So again, we understand that, and the board has to determine that the enforcement of the provision of the bylaw, access only through or across legal frontage, will result in substantial hardship to the property owners, and is the result of circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, and topography of the property. Enforcement of this, of that section will result in substantial hardship and other hardships. to the property owners, and that they will have to relocate their driveway back to Coacassett Street from Stockbridge, with the cost of constructing a new driveway and walkway, removing the existing driveway and walkway, and re-landscaping all the affected areas. The new driveway also has a safety hardship with it. Lot size does not allow for any kind of turnaround or hammerhead on the property, so you'd have to go straight in. Previously, I was informed.
Do you have pictures?
I think we showed you some of these pictures, so we have extras if you want to see it. But when it was located on Coacassett Street, you'd have to, you know, drive straight in. And there's only enough room for really two cars. So if the furthest car in had to get out, everyone has to back out. So either people are backing out or they go onto Coacassett Street and back in. And again, if you're the first person in, everybody has to move in. So there's also the safety issue with regard to the driveway. And there is an elementary school across the street and they are in that zone. These hardships are direct result of the shape of the lot being so undersized for the area. And again, they tried to increase it at the time of the development over here by getting additional parcel B. But again, there's the drainage easement on there and there's a limit, the area on their property. Also, the house is located so close to the street, you know, there's really limited area in the front yard where you can put it, and over to the left-hand side, you have the septic system over to the side and going back, so the left side cannot be used either. Therefore, the little enforcement of that section will result in financial and other hardships to the applicant, which is directly related to the shape, undersized lot, unusual shape, and other circumstances of the property. Additionally, the house is located on a curve on the road where people, you know, tend to get some, you know, higher speeds. Again, we're down by the borough school and also close to an intersection, if you look at the assessor's map, where Community Way and Coacassett Street, you know, intersect. There's a lot of new development, new houses down in that area. So it is a, you know, a high-volume area with some speeds on it. Additionally, the requested relief would not either substantially be detrimental to the public good nor substantially derogate from the intent or the purpose of the bylaws. The requested relief will mitigate the traffic and safety issues that would result from access in the property from Coacassett Street. Good planning, typically when you bring something in front of the planning board, they usually dictate that they want access from side streets and not from main streets. And again, that's for public safety purposes. So it actually, we think, promote, excuse me, this purpose of protecting the health and safety of the town of Foxborough and Hemmett as long as them. So again, this lot is uniquely characterized by its small size, you know, the drainage easement that they have, location of the house, and the location of the lot, and all these things is not common in that area, mainly because this house is, was built so long ago. So I think at that point...
All I can say right now is I'm glad that all of this is on Foxborough Cable, because I'm going to have to watch it two or three more times just to get everything.
I, I can get you all the numbers.
You should give us the number before you even start.
I went through them today and I actually checked a few of them with Mr. Buckley this afternoon to make sure I got it all.
Actually Frank, why don't you come up here, it might be easier.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure with a couple of things. So...
This is the...
The drain easement would be... Part of it is on parcel B, which, which is owned by the Hiltons, correct?
Yeah, so the...
They own it now. They didn't have it to begin with.
This is Lot B.
Right.
Right here. Drainage is the dotted line that goes down there.
Okay.
And around.
Okay.
So that's the drainage easement.
Mm-hmm. And that's basically the gully that we have there.
Yes. And that's where it starts sloping down.
Mm-hmm.
So again, you know, you don't want to do anything right beside it.
But, but this, this piece of property here?
Yep, is owned by...
Lenehans?
Yes.
Okay. Which would basically be?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
And again, you'll see that their lot has like two hundred, it's twenty-six or twelve, I can't, I'm not 100% sure, they just have barely two hundred feet, and there's just over two hundred feet here. So there's no room, there was no room to give them additional. And you'll see that they were forty thousand and ten square feet. These are larger, but you also need lot width and other things. So, you know, I talked with them, again, Bill Buckley, and he said, you know, there's no way they couldn't give them any more land or any frontage at the time of the development.
So looking at, it's going to be hard to figure it here.
Yep.
Looking at, at this map again, your driveway probably comes in sort of over here? Your driveway, their driveway?
Yes, right above the dotted line.
Okay. So everything is on the Lenehan property until?
Exactly.
Until that point?
Right.
Okay.
It comes over, it comes down like here. And previously, the easement came down like this and was supposed to come right in on that corner. So that's where I would do, you know, a new plan, you know, fix it and also fix everything.
So would the easement, the drain easement end over here or is any of the driveway over the easement?
No, the driveway's not on the easement.
And obviously, if they wanted to put a driveway anyplace else, it would have to go over the, over the drainage basement.
And you couldn't do that.
Yeah.
Because in a planning board decision, it's language that does not allow that.
Oh, I mean, I think, so basically, this got built with, with no driveway originally. Well, no, yeah, they, they, the parcel on Coacassett, they...
When the original house was built...
Oh, that's, oh, I see the stark sign, the plaque on the...
Yeah, according to the assessor's, assessor's rec, it was built in nineteen hundreds, so...
Nineteen hundreds.
So they probably had horse buggy set and that was it, but...
The original deed I have is from the late eighteen hundreds. And again, when the, let me get in front of the mic. When the property was deeded out in nineteen twenty-three, it had the house on it. So I'm just making the assumption that the house was built late eighteen hundreds, very early nineteen hundreds, but it wasn't deeded out until nineteen twenty-three. Because the eighteen hundred deed did not have a structure on it.
So the, the land that, the lots that make up Stockbridge Road, Stockbridge Road, who owned that? Was it this house in front or was it somebody else?
I, I believe it's, it was the house to the right of Stockbridge.
To the right of Stockbridge?
Yes.
The, the Jacobsons?
I don't know them names.
Yeah, so if I'm looking at, say I'm across the street, I'm looking down Stockbridge, the house is to the left. So what I'm asking is, who owned that land that comprised Stockbridge, I guess, of those lots?
I think it was, the developer bought it.
From who?
I don't know.
My assumption, and it's just an assumption, guess, call it what you want, is it's the house to the right of Stockbridge? And may I come up and show you why?
Oh, yeah.
Which map do you want to see?
Yeah.
This is, I don't believe I sent this to you.
That's what this?
No, I already sent it.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. So you'll see, this is a new lot. New lot, new lot, new lot. So I'm assuming this was the, this property owned all of that.
Okay.
Because they have a very strange shaped lot now.
Yeah.
But again, a lot of that has to do with meeting all the requirements for a lot.
Right, right, right.
And I didn't even ask Billy to be honest with you, I just made that assumption because it kind of makes sense. They got a lot here, 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 here. Now, they, they might have pulled two lots together, there might have been a lot behind, I don't know.
You look at this and you say, okay, well, they're squeezing two lots out, and it's kind of a shoehorn deal to me. I mean, that's, and that's the way it is.
So that, that would also be a Coacassett address then, right? Because I think there are only three addresses on Stockbridge?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I, I don't know where they come off of, actually. You know, I did try to look at the deeds to see if I could figure out if that, their house came from that big parcel. But that'll be, it's still all that I couldn't agree it up. I could've, I couldn't agree it up.
So right now, they have a, they have a driveway on a right-of-way, and that's where, that's where we are. And we'd like to have a garage someday. Now, now, I got a question, have you, you know, I don't want to create, if we do this, make another problem. If they drop a garage in somewhere in here, there's, there's some setback on that.
Yep.
That they're going to have to make sure they meet.
Yep, I'll come back in front of you guys.
So you're aware of that because you don't want to... We really don't like it when people come back six months later and tell us, well, we didn't think about this, you know? So you've thought about it.
Absolutely.
Again, the, the reason we're here is because they, it all started with them wanting a garage and me looking at different plans saying, okay, you can eat a variance here, no finding, because you're connecting it, things like that. But then, once I dug into it, I said, you know, we gotta get all this straightened up. Then we sat down and said, do you want to go for everything, you know, at once, you know? And we talked about it and said, you know, we gotta get this straightened out. Because if we don't get this, then everything else is irrelevant at this point. They're going to have to come off of Coacassett Street and see if they can even put a garage in that way. And again, driveway would probably go right past the front of the house to the back, because that's where it's going to really have to be located.
Now, you've talked to your neighbors about this, where you have...
We've, we've talked to them a lot. We've got a good relationship with the Lenehans, and we, that's how all of this started, is we were trying to figure out what we could do with the property line itself to make sure we had a legal setback with some of the sketches that we had done and actually had a couple of designers do some drawing as well. And all of it just came back to...
Somewhere along the way, by the way, did you know?
Thankfully, we, we found out about these issues because the easement would have gone away had any of us sold our home. And that would not have worked out for anybody, especially the new owners. And so we wanted to get this, this issue resolved first and then start exploring a garage. And we've talked to our neighbors about the garage as well, and they're on board with it, they're fine with it, we've shown them the drawings, just the, not even close to being a permanent drawing or a final drawing, just some ideas. And this was discovered and that's certainly has to be resolved first, if possible, yeah.
I don't realize I have anything else.
Frank, you said that the easement can be terminated?
The old one.
The old one, okay.
With the possibility of termination and the fact that it was not on, we didn't need, per se, to do it, do a new one, but since it was not, again, it was about halfway on the easement, halfway off, I said, we should fix this all up and again, go over everything with the Lenehans to make sure they're fine with it. And as you can see, they, they signed the, the new easement and, you know, they're, they're on board with what they're proposing with here and working with them with regard to being able to do a garage. But that's the next step. This is the first one.
May I ask a question? Did, did you get the color pictures? Okay.
But we, I don't know, I should say, I drove down there and sat in the street and looked at the whole thing.
You did look at it.
Does anyone want?
We got them.
Yeah, I have those, thank you.
You know, I also drove down there, it's a beautiful house, and frankly, I wish you wouldn't put a garage there because...
What was really amazing to me was the difference from the original house to then when she bought it with her ex-husband and then what they did to it. I mean, it's just...
Yeah, it's very, it's very nice.
Okay, so that's, that's house one, and then what we see now is...
And we want, if we did do a garage, it would just be in keeping with the house. I work in Boston five days a week and it's been tough, and he travels back and forth from Atlanta because he worked for Delta Airlines. So being there on my own sometime, quite a bit of time, it's just been tricky with no garage and every other house has a garage. But we don't want to do anything that's outrageous, just something that's in keeping, tasteful, that goes along with the house, just at the end of the driveway and attach it.
You know, unless you start to look, you say, hey, this is an old house here. But I think it's, you know, the way, what's been done. I don't remember what that house looked like ten or fifteen years ago. And I'm, I'm over that way a bit, we, I have some good friends that you probably know, but anyhow, and I didn't speak to them about it, but I think they would have called me if they didn't like what was going on.
So Frank, you, you've got an easement that allows them to access the property. So again, why don't you go through the variance criteria again, so just like, get this straight, where you're coming from?
Okay. Again, the hardship would be financial as well as safety. The hardship is they're going to have to relocate their driveway, so they're going to have to construct a new driveway and walkway off of Coacassett Street, remove the existing driveway and walkway to a great extent, you know, depending on where they locate it, but to a great extent, and then re-landscape that, that whole area. You know, all within making sure that they don't encroach or affect the drainage that's there too. You know? So, you know, even though the drainage is right here, you can't do something right up to the side of it. You know, as Billy was explaining to me today, you gotta get some distance off it, otherwise it loses some of its integrity. And then, you know, again, the safety issue with regard to coming off a main street versus a side street, which again, you know, when you...
You don't want to back out of driveways in that stretch.
No, no. And again, before it was, you know, a short driveway, only two cars, you get back to back, and again, if you're the front one, you have that, those issues. And, you know, so again, I think this would, that would protect the health and safety of the town's inhabitants as well as their own. And, you know, it really goes, again, to the uniqueness of the lot and the character of it and that it's so small, even though they've tried to add to it, they were limited in, in what they could do. And, you know, you have a drainage easement there, the location of the septic system and location of the house, you know, be on top of the road.
Kim, any questions, thoughts?
So the driveway as, where it is now, that's been there since ninety-eight? How long has it been?
Ninety-eight, ninety-nine. That's when the, that's when the renovation went on, and I'm sure they did it at the end, if you have entrusts coming back and forth. Or at least that's when the pavement went down.
Okay, and prior to nineteen ninety-eight, there was a short driveway off of Coacassett. Okay.
Yes, and in one of the photos, you can see, this is again, a picture from where Stockbridge would be.
From Stockbridge, okay.
You know, and that's the driveway right there.
Oh, I see, okay.
And, and there, the doorway was always there, there was never a door, you know, that you could see from Coacassett Street. It was always around the side of the house where it is now. It was, that was where it was always located.
Okay. So the driveway in the, I'm looking at this right now, so, so the driveway and the, the two windows that have awnings on them, those two face what is now Stockbridge?
Right. And again, but the driveway went out towards Coacassett. And again, but the driveway went out towards Coquassit.
Towards Coquassit, okay, thank you.
So before the road went in, before Stockbridge Road went in, it was just a driveway off of Coquassit?
Before Stockbridge, yes.
Okay.
I think I'm good, thank you.
Kurt, any questions or comments?
No, straightforward enough for me.
If we beat this thing to death, it's up to us.
You're sure? Because you're gonna write this decision.
No, it isn't. Okay.
We'll see if your new, if your new equipment can do that. Dave, anything else?
No, I'm fine with it.
Scott, anything?
I think it's unfortunate that, you know, that the opportunity on this was in 97 when they laid this thing out.
Yeah.
This is not...
I could not get a good explanation.
And it's your buddy, was it Buckley? Your buddy Buckley?
Yeah, he couldn't...
Blaming on Bill.
Blaming on Bill. Buddy's his cousin.
You know? Because that would have been the time to ask endorsement on the planning board, which I think they would have, to come in front of you to try to get a downwind.
Probably would have had the base, picked up that whole basin someplace else. That's really, I think, the thing that starts the ball rolling with all the issues here is they put that big drainage, that's a pretty big drainage basin, I think.
If I had to guess, and this is just a guess, I think that's where it probably had to go. That's probably the little point of that whole area, you know? And, and again, they couldn't have given any of that area to them at that time because, mainly because of the frontage, but they needed the area for the other lots and for, you know, lot width and all those other things. So Bill did confirm that there was, you know, they couldn't have given them, you know, any of that frontage or any of that area that was needed. And you'll see from the original plan to what was the revised plan for lot 1A and 3A, they did that to be able to get more land into that parcel B for them to receive, which included a portion of the drainage. So even though it's not really good to them because they can't do anything on that drainage easement or too close to it, it was just additional land for them, for their property to help them, you know, get more conforming in those three different ways.
Scott, any questions or...
Well, my first thoughts on this, when I first saw this, was my concerns were for the safe, safety, safety response from emergency services, like EMS and stuff like that, because they would have to come off of Stockbridge Road instead of Coquassit. But now that I'm hearing it, it seems like Coquassit is a very busy street. It's probably a blessing in disguise if they had to access the, from Stockbridge Road for emerg, God forbid, for emergency services, because then it's a safer entrance and exit from that area. So I kinda like changed, flip-flopped my opinion there. So I think it is a better setup like the one they are proposing.
Okay, good, thank you. So why don't we close the public caution over here?
I move we close the public caution.
Second.
All in favor? I'll probably be calling you soon, just to get some of this background, but, you know, again, I had, I asked Diana to send out the three cases that between she and I we could think of dealing with access. And this is similar to a couple of them, at least, you know, a couple we've approved, you know, as far as some feature of the property that dictates the issue. So I think you've, you know, demonstrated the appropriate, you know, need for it and the compliance with the zoning requirements, with the variance requirements. Anything else, Dave?
No, I'm good with it.
In Coquassit, that's a fast bit of road.
They really move along, not part of it particularly, I believe me. They say I know people over there and, man, when I leave their house, feel like I'm rolling the dice, backing out.
So why don't we give them a motion?
I move we grant the requested variance.
Second.
And do we have any conditions?
None caught my mind with me.
And I can't think of any other special permits, variances, or findings. I think you just did that to, you know, let us use our imagination.
The easement locates it, so it has to be there anyway.
Yeah.
So it can't be moved. So the only condition is that, you know, they have to access it as indicated on the plan, I would think.
You know, the other thing with this, I believe, if I heard Frank write, if we didn't do this, there could be an issue down the road about your easement.
If you sell the property, I mean.
If you sell the property, you, but, I mean, that could be another mess.
Could prevent you from selling the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we're trying to screen off some now.
Piece of property, they can't even put a vehicle on it.
Right.
Right.
Okay, all in favor? opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go away.
Okay.
Because I wanna just bring people up to date on things. So the sign bala, so we met with the board of selectmen and they agreed to put something, we'll probably make some changes, do some tweaks here and there, but they agreed to put something on the warrant. They haven't taken a position yet, you know, they know that we haven't taken a position yet. We'll see.
Did you see the plan showing where possible locations of signs?
The one that Ryan Norton did?
The town did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I've got a couple of other thoughts in that regard. You know, number one would be to eliminate allowing static billboards. And two, you know, potentially increasing the distance, which would cut the, you know, potential number down. But it's something that I wanna think about and perhaps, you know, see what, you know, what we've done.
Well, one of the things I think, again, I've talked with Mr. Buckley, some of that area is wetlands.
Yeah.
So I think max, there could possibly be five.
That's what I felt in looking at it, yeah.
You know, because of the wetlands and the distances and all that, that's max. And if we got even more information with regard to wetlands, it may be reduced.
Yeah.
But between Arthur Rounds and the DPW, it looks like only one will go in there.
Yeah, there's no problem with either of those.
And the other ones down there really has to do with distance and wetlands. So right now, I'd say the four, maybe five, depending on where they're located in the wetlands.
Yeah, that was, again, it was Mark's question and if he's, you know, very concerned about it, you know, perhaps by increasing the distance, we can, you know, eliminate, you know, a potential one or two, so. But other than that, I guess there's a placeholder on the warrant for what, you know, we had looked at last month.
That is my understanding too. And I think it, right now, it's as is and where you guys had the blank of 300, we had the blank, 300 has been placed in there with the understanding.
Yeah, 300, as far as how far it would have to be from a residential unit.
You know, but you were thinking about increasing the 1,000-foot distance...
Yeah.
And restricting it to just electronic billboards?
Yeah. Because right now, the way, if I remember the map correctly, between Arthur's and the, one of the DPW property, there was an area where you could put one in.
Yeah.
And you could certainly put a static in there.
Yeah. The other way you could do it is limit all billboards to be 1,000 feet, so that if someone wanted to put up a static, it's gotta be 1,000 feet from any other one.
Yeah.
And I don't think anyone's gonna put a static up.
Yeah, I don't think so either, but...
There anyway. But if you limited all billboards to 1,000 feet, you'd probably do what you're looking to do.
Yeah. But something we'll talk about.
Yep.
Okay. You're dismissed. Up in touch.
Great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes. So I had a couple of small changes that I sent to Diana the other day as far as the January minutes.
And then December minutes.
Diana told me today that I had...
And I've gotten stuck in my draft thing, so I sent them out right after the last meeting. Marney sent me back edits.
Which I completely forgot about, but Diana told me.
So we have two sets of minutes, December and January.
You're fine, I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Fine.
Motion?
Move to accept the minutes.
December and January.
December and January.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Any, anything in from March yet?
Another guy asking about a garage on a weird shaped lot, but I don't know, he'll come back.
We may have, Scott, I don't know if you've heard anything further on 124 Washington Street on that billboard?
Bill Caspero was asking me about advertising costs and other things about that, so that might be coming.
Yeah, Bill said to me today that he is trying to get that in by next week. So I don't know if you've heard anything further or...
Myself? No, Mr. Chair. I did sit down with him, I think, the first week that I started and discussed what he was gonna potentially propose. And I, that's where we left it. And he was just gonna look for a modification. But he has to do some engineering work, or they have to do some engineering work to get that modification proposed and drawn up before they come to the board. So that might be taking some time right now.
Yeah, what Bill told me today was he's just waiting for the materials, for the information from Lamar, so.
Exactly. I mean, it takes some time because they're overburdened right now as everybody is, because the construction is just crazy. But, but yeah, he said it should be soon.
Okay. So we may have that from March. The only other thing that I got is on the Moore Street project, they still do not have their project eligibility letter. If you read the reporter today, Diana can confirm all this, I guess they've resolved the wetlands issues?
Yeah, they got their INRAG from conservation. Now that's subject to appeal. I know the Van Dan booms. I don't know if they will or not, but they sent a strongly worded email that they weren't happy, so.
Is there a 20-day appeal period for that too, or...
I think it, might be 10. They have to appeal to the DEP.
Okay.
I think within 10 days.
I believe it is 10.
10 days from...
10 days from when it was sent to the DEP, it was sent to the DEP Tuesday morning.